Okay. Wendell, are you on yet? It's star six to unmute and star six to mute.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, alright. Sorry for, sorry for my troubles here guys, I'm technically on the challenge, so bear with me. But, uh, anyway, uh, let's get, uh, let's get started. Uh, we're going to call the, uh, the October Planning Commission meeting to order. Uh, we start off with, uh, we're going to start off with an intended roll call if I could. Uh, Nathan's, uh, I don't believe it was it's not, or is?
Yes, I'm here, Wendell, I'm here.
Oh, okay, alright, good Nathan, I wasn't sure if you were making time on, but can you go ahead and do a roll call please?
Yes, um, Wendell Miller? Present, Donald Jacob Moore?
Present.
Just really had Lee?
Here.
Justin Cuthbert?
Here.
Luke Duffield?
Here.
Jim Linder?
Here.
Larry Smith?
Here.
Cody Black?
Present.
And, uh, non-voting lazy on, uh, Justin Keller?
Here.
Okay. Alright, thank you Nathan, alright, uh, we'll start the meeting tonight with, uh, with a little housekeeping out of here of, uh, take, uh, approving the minutes of the September meeting. I want everybody to motion, if everybody has seen those and doesn't have any objections or... Anything to add to that, do I hear a motion? To approve the minutes from last month's meeting?
This guy, I believe, I'm down, I approve.
Okay, mixture blunt? Okay. Okay, Nathan, you get that?
No, didn't I, Cody, did you?
Yeah, Cody, I think Cody made the motion and I think Commissioner Duffield seconded it, I'm not mistaken. Does that sound right guys?
That work?
That work. Okay, alright, we have a motion in a second to approve the minutes from last month's meeting, all those in favor and also saying aye? Nathan, go ahead and get us, get us the head count on that please.
Okay, uh, Jackamore?
Yes.
Barber, yes. Hadley?
Yes.
Cuthbert?
Yes.
Duffield?
Yes.
Linder?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Carries?
Okay, alright. Okay, the, uh, first, uh, first item for, uh, new items tonight here, we got the vacation of Portview right-of-way between lot sixteen and twenty-five of the Madison White Division submitted by Joe Wolf. Uh, do you have a staff report, Nathan?
Yes, sir, we do, uh, first, Ms. Shirley, you are logged in twice and that's why you might be getting feedback when you, um... When you speak, just FYI, one of those might be needed to be muted. Uh, so this, this application is regarding the Fourth Street, uh, vacation between Seattle and South Juana. Um, if you had a chance to read the staff report, it's pretty straightforward in my opinion. This vacation does not impair circulation, it has little to no impact on land use benefits due to the city. And always, uh, and allows the surrounding property owners to utilize undeveloped property. Um, through this process, we did realize that there is one, uh, one property that was built facing the undeveloped Fourth Street. And that, um, address needed to be corrected, so I talked with the property owner and I've talked with the police department. And that address is being, um, readdressed to more accurately reflect the, um, location where they get access off of South Juana. Um, and that was the major thing and I, and I think it'll be a correction to help with, um, first responders, uh, if ever there is an emergency. So really, staff does recommend, um, forwarding this application. I did want to give you, uh, commissioners a heads up in that as staff reviewed this, we did notice that there are two alleyways that really need to be vacated in coordination with the Fourth Street right-of-way. However, we did not get confirmation back from all the utility companies prior to, uh, being able to prepare the agenda and staff report. So there will be vacation coming forward as soon as we get, um, information and responses back from utility companies for a couple of alleys that should be closed in conjunction with this. At the, at this time, staff is just recommending forwarding this application to, uh, City Council for approval to vacate the Fourth Street, um, right-of-way between Seattle and South Juana, uh, with the following conditions. Access easement from South Juana to parcel two and three of the West Fourth Street closure layout. Uh, and that was requested by a couple of the property owners who, uh, own that property, they would still like access to it. Water and sewer line easements is indicated on that same layout. Extension of the proposed water line easement from Seattle, turning south and extending across the vacated Fourth Street right-of-way to join the twelve-foot alley that runs north and south. Uh, and then readdress that, um, house that I identified seventeen hundred West Fourth Street to three ninety-eight South Juana Avenue to help facilitate emergency and other related service providers. Uh, these results, uh, as a result of the findings that there's not an impact to the public trust, land use impacts, no adverse effects to the public benefit. There's no objection filed by any utility company for the vacation as long as the easements above, noted above remain. And there's no current installations within the easement prohibiting the vacation of the right-of-way. And that is my staff report.
Okay, thanks Sarah. Uh, commissioners, any questions? Or, uh, is, is Mr. Wolf on with us tonight? Or anybody else who wants to, uh, anybody else got any questions or comments? Commissioner Smith on this? Is there anybody on tonight?
Joe is on the call, um, Joe, did you have any comments or anything you'd like to add?
No, I don't have anything to add other than your staff's report there.
Okay, alright, um, commissioners, what's your pleasure?
This is, this is Cody, I would make a motion to approve, uh, as recommended by staff report.
Okay, alright, we have a motion to approve, do I hear a second?
Uh, second.
This is Don.
Commissioner Smith is second, motion. We've got a motion by, uh, Commissioner Black, uh, seconded by, uh, Commissioner Smith to, uh, to approve this, that's presented by staff. Um, all those in favor and acknowledge by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh... Nathan, here we go, the roll call. Barrett Shirley?
Don Jacob Moore?
Yes.
Barber, abstaining?
Yeah.
Richard, Ashley?
What are you doing, Dad?
Hadley?
Ms. Shirley, could you have, can, if you do a thumbs up or are you for it or I can see you? She's giving a thumbs up, so voting yes.
Hadley, yes. Cuthbert?
Yes.
Duffield?
Yes.
Linder?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Carries?
Okay, alright, let's deliver those carries and, uh, we'll move on to the next item here. Next item, uh, for, uh, discussion is the, uh, final plat for Brookview Estate, uh, phase six, submitted by Barrett Associates, I'm happy waiting for it, Barry. Sarah, take it away.
Thank you, Commissioner, and this is the final plat application for Brookview Estates Phase Six. After much discussion, after, um, working through a couple of issues regarding sidewalk location, finishing, uh, curb and gutter on Seattle. Staff and the developer have come to an agreement regarding, um... What, where the sidewalks are going to be, they will end up being in the right-of-way. The developer is working on, will be posting a bond, they have provided a cost estimate to the city. The city engineer has, um, approved that cost estimate and so we will be receiving a bond prior to, um, City Council if the improvements have not already been done. There are still a few items, as you will note by what staff is recommending that, um, Barrett and Associates does concur with. I was on the phone with Mr. Garza today going over the requirements and he does concur with those on it, although he is unfortunately unable to attend the meeting tonight. Um, so staff does recommend forwarding the, right, this application for the final plat to City Council for their approval with the following conditions. The existing right-of-way for South, uh, Fourth Street for South Tulsa and South Utah Avenue shall be vacated prior to City Council approval for the final plat. It has already been read one time at City Council and it will be read another time, um, at the next City Council meeting. So this will be taken care of prior to City Council approving this application. The easements located adjacent to the right-of-way shall be noted as utility easements only and not utility and drainage easements. Dave Garza, uh, in my conversation with him today said he had made those changes, however, staff still has not received a copy of that final plat to see that those have been taken care of, but understand that they will be taken care of prior to, um, City Council. They will locate, um, the property pins shall be located for each lot and property boundary. The bill of assurance shall be submitted to staff, uh, for review and approval. And then the performance bond for the improvements not yet complete shall be pre- provided prior to City Council approval. So those are all, those requirements, conditions are all, uh, a result of the findings that the final plat substantially conforms to the preliminary plat and all the utilities have been installed. And that is my staff report.
Alright, thanks Sarah. Is, uh, anybody from Barrett Associates, uh, here tonight, please?
Wendell?
Anything to add?
No, they were not going to be able to be on the call tonight.
Okay, alright, okay, uh, commissioners, uh, what's your pleasure on this one?
This is Luke.
This is Don.
That was a stereo, almost, almost exactly a stereo guy, that's good.
Okay.
Okay, alright, we're going to have a, we've got a, uh...
You can move on in a second, whatever.
We've got a, we got a motion from, uh, from, uh, Commissioner Jacob Moore and seconded by, uh, Commissioner Duffield, that sound good? And, uh, and all those, uh, in, in favor of, uh, approving the final plat, they acknowledge by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Nathan, go ahead and get the roll call on that please.
Jacob Moore?
Aye.
Barber, yes. Hadley?
She says yes.
Yes.
Cuthbert?
Yes.
Duffield?
Yes.
Linder?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Black?
Let me do a second.
Joe Black, uh, abstaining? Carries?
Aye. Okay, alright, uh, next, uh, next item here is a, uh, well, we've, if we've been asked to table, an item here, the special use permit request towards building containers sales business on, uh, you know, C two at, uh, two thousand and eleven East Parkway, uh, by Max Lawson. Uh, we've been asked to table this, we'll, we'll need to, we'll need to approve that motion in a second. So, uh, somebody would, uh, the way we move to table this item?
Move to table, that's what...
Okay, Commissioner Smith has moved to, uh, table this item, so... Next one? Do I hear your second?
I'll second that, this is Jim.
This is Don, I'll say it.
Okay, alright, we have a second, uh, all those in favor acknowledge by saying aye?
Alright.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, alright, uh, Nathan, go ahead and get the roll call please.
Okay, I got, I show, I mean, I show Samantha's motion and Linder's, just second, is that right?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, here we go, Jacob Moore?
Yes.
Uh, Barber, yes. Hadley?
Yes.
Yes.
Cuthbert?
Yes.
Duffield?
Yes.
Linder?
Yes.
Smith? Get it. Black?
Yes.
Carries?
Okay, alright, next, um, uh, we have, uh, another request to, uh, uh, table an item here. Uh, it's the commercial builder design on the same property, uh, the commercial design papers, uh, we've been asked to table that also, uh... And that's, uh, two thousand and, uh, two thousand and twenty-three, uh... So, do the, we need to get a motion, uh, uh...
Just, just go on, bring motion to table. Give me a second.
Okay. Give me a second, we've got a lot of feedback here, I'm going to get it coming from, uh, Sarah, can you help me clean that up? Okay, alright, we have a motion, uh, I think, motion was from, uh, uh, Cuthbert, the second? Who was the second?
It was Black.
Black, oh, okay, Commissioner Black, uh, was the, uh, second. All those in favor of this, uh, uh, tabling this item, we acknowledge by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, alright, I'll go ahead and get the roll call if it would.
Okay, Jack, at six, six is where the noise is coming from?
Yes.
The what?
Barber, yes. Hadley?
Yes.
Cuthbert?
Yes.
Duffield?
Yes.
Linder?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Carries?
Okay, alright, um, we have one last item here, guys, if I can, if you, if you do have noise in the background, if you would hit star six to mute or, uh, that would, uh, yeah, star six will mute you if you, if you have any kind of, uh, noise coming in the background, that'd be appreciated. Uh, last item tonight, uh, Sarah, you go ahead and, uh, you want to go ahead and introduce this item here and discuss the whole brother?
Yes, sir.
The ranking of the day, then, okay, go right ahead.
Yes, sir, so we have been reviewing, uh, timeline for applications and in an effort to help, um, reduce how long some applications have to go by up to, um, shortening the timeframe by up to three weeks. If we change the date of planning commission from the fourth Monday to the first Thursday of each month, we will then be able to hear applications that are forwarded to City Council that same month and shorten the timeframe for applications. Uh, it's most apparent when it's a vacation of right-of-way or, um, a final, uh, not final plat... Vacation of right-of-way is the number one application that will actually see a significant time reduction by almost a month, whereas most applications will see about a ten to fourteen day shortening of timeframe from when they have to submit their application to when it is final complete at City Council by changing the date from the fourth Monday to the first Thursday. If you had a chance to review the two thousand and twenty-one application timeline that I, we had uploaded, loaded to the Google Drive, there's a, first application, um, talks about the hearing date being January seventh and it shows what the application deadline would be, how we have to notify the courier, the tech review, application resubmital. So if we say anything at tech review that the applicant needs to provide additional information, have the deadline date on that and then when staff reports are due to the planning commission and board of adjustments. I also included on that a brief calendar just to show you on actual days. So when the applications are due on a Tuesday, notification is on a Thursday, changing of tech review to Tuesdays, revision deadline and, um, staff reports are due so that you have to, um, sufficient time to review applications prior to the hearing. On page two of that staff report, it gave all of the dates that were proposing for the two thousand and twenty-one hearing dates, starting with January seventh all the way through December and what the application deadline date would be. And these dates we propose to post on the website to help, um, applicants as they move through this process. And so what we're asking of staff is that planning commissioners, um, take action to change the date starting January seventh of two thousand and twenty-one. So it would be the first Thursday of every month instead of the fourth Monday. Are there any questions?
Sarah, are you going to need action on this today or do you want, I mean, as long as we make, uh, as long as we make the call before December, I guess we're okay, right? I mean, do we need to...
Well, no, it, we need to, to move forward with this so that staff can start advertising because if we wait till December, we have actually missed the deadline for the January hearing.
Right. And, uh, and let me, uh, if you would, could I get you to, uh, give me your input on this too, uh, as far as these virtual meetings versus, uh, in person? I mean, I believe that, you know, we're going to be, we need to try to get back into council chambers as quickly as we can. Uh, but, uh, is, is there anything that, is there anything that the virtuals are not offering that we would be getting through the, you know, through the, uh, you know, CP one person? Are we, are we, uh, you know, I know we're making every effort we can to make everybody welcome to a public meeting, but if someone, you know, learns of an item and they see it there online or whatever, they don't, you know, they don't know how to get online or whatever, I mean, is there, do you see any problems with that? Or maybe is, is this meeting any progress?
So far, everyone, um, has been able to get onto the meetings that we, um, we've worked with people. We've offered pre-meetings, setting up Google Meet, uh, test meetings to help people get into the meetings. However, my understanding, and Trey, I'm glad you're on tonight, my understanding is that the governor has only issued an executive order that allows us to have these virtual meetings through the December thirty-first this year. And I'm not sure that he has extended that, so any meeting as of today, as the way the executive, um, order has been issued by the governor, January's meetings would have to be, um, in-person meetings. We, uh, did try to do a mixed meeting where we could have some people in council chambers to have the meeting in person and then allow other people to call in or Google Meet in, in, like we're doing tonight. However, because of the way council chambers is set up, that is not, um, practical for us as a jurisdiction to make happen. And so it, we have to make the decision that we're either going to be virtual only, where this is the format of the meeting or we're going to be in person, it's not going to be something where we could do a mixed meeting. Uh, we can do these virtual meetings for November and December, absolutely covered by the executive order. Um, and unless something changes, we would have to be in person in January.
I, I agree, uh, with, I mean, we do need to take all precautions possible, we do need to follow any, you know, state or federal mandates as far as what we need to do as, as far as attendance goes, but I think we need to be back in council chambers as quickly as we can. And I'll just, I mean, I haven't, uh, uh, you know, we really, we, we need to be back in the chambers by, at least by January anyway. So barring any, you know, uh, outbreak or a, you know, a, you know, a relapse of this pandemic or whatever, I mean, we, I'm, we're going to be back to council chambers by first of the year. I would, I think we all need to shoot for that, I mean, I think we owe it to the people that we, you know, we owe to citizens of Russellville, we owe it to our, you know, to our city, you know, in general, we've, you know, we've, uh, agreed to help them out and, uh, in this capacity and, um, I think we need to do so and that means meeting, so... But, uh, that's my input, that's Wendell's opinion, that's worth exactly what you paid for it, huh? So, anybody else got any comment or any questions at all, please speak now, it would be heard.
Ms. Shirley, do you have any questions or... If you want to call me at four nine eight seven seven six six?
Well, alright, we don't have any other discussion about, uh, about that, then, uh...
Wendell, okay, I mean, yeah. Okay, I think you can, I think that's gone off now. My only thing is, um, just as long as we follow the guidelines as far as the safe distances and all of that or the mask wearing wherever it is because of, there's still, uh, small confined quarters there.
Right, absolutely, I agree with that, one hundred percent.
I've got, I've got a question or two.
Okay, go ahead Nathan.
I, I agree with Shirley, it's, it's, it's going to be really tough to, uh, uh, social distance and we've had some meetings, uh, in the chambers there where it's been shoulder to shoulder and, um, and it's just going to be tough, uh, tough to really have a meeting, uh, with many people there and, and, and to them label it safe in my mind, and I understand that November, December, I agree with that, uh, or whatever that's worth. But I have a, Sarah, on, on the date changes, um, this is to, this is to expedite request, is that, is that what we're trying to do?
Yes, sir, we're trying to shorten the timeline from when people apply. Uh, it really impacts those people who apply and then their application has to go on to City Council. Uh, special use permits, vacation of right-of-way, um, final plats, anything that has to go from planning commission to City Council, it shortens the timeframe on that and that's what we're looking to try and, and shorten that timeframe on.
And I, I agree, I agree, I'm sure that we'll make sure everybody's okay with that. Have you, have you talked to any developers or engineers and is there any reason that they, they would have a problem with this? It's actually to accommodate them, correct?
It is to accommodate them, I specifically reached out to Dave Garza and it's unfortunate that he is not on the call tonight. Um, because he submits a majority of applications that come to planning commission and I tried to get his input on this and his only comment was, well, what if in January we had two meetings to accommodate, to have kind of a transition period from the current frame of doing things to the new deadlines and everything? Uh, and so that's something we could consider, uh, for January, where we would have one on the first Thursday of the month to accommodate the new timeframe to get some of those applications and then have one the fourth Thursday of the month. Uh, I don't see a lot of benefit for, uh, by doing that from staff's perspective because they could still be heard the first Thursday of the following month, which is a week and a half. Uh, I don't see that we need to meet twice in a month, we don't have that many applications, but it is something that planning commission could consider and say, yes, let's do that for January and then move forward with the others, with the new twenty-one, twenty-one schedule.
We're tying in the timeline, is it, the, the technical review people, they've, they've got time to do whatever they need to do, do their research?
Yes, sir, actually, the way this, uh, lined up in order to get notification into the courier, we ended up with three extra days on the review schedule. Uh, so it actually gives staff a few more days to get things taken care of.
Okay. I'm, I'm good with it, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Luke, how you feel about it?
I agree with, uh, I mean, I think it's, it's, in this...
I agree with, uh, I mean, I think it, it, in this day, it's pretty hard to predict the future. I think, uh, as long as the, uh, the citizens don't have any issue with it, and we're performing, um, you know, the service remotely, uh, and I, I think, Sarah, and, and everyone else has done a good job facilitating this, that until we have, uh, you know, I think a clear, uh, a clear path, I have no problem continuing to do it remotely, as long as we're able to, uh, function, which I think is, right up to so far, we haven't been able to do that.
Alright, that's what I do, thanks. Uh, alright, I didn't even put you on the spot there, but I, I know everybody.
No, I'm fine, we're good, I'm fine.
Alright. Okay, alright, well, uh, guys, Sarah, you got anything else?
I just wanna confirm that we are good with switching the dates for the twenty twenty-one calendar.
Uh, we need to go ahead and get that in a minute, so I would, I would feel more comfortable if we, uh, if we had a motion and seconded and approved it as a group. Uh, I can make it at least, uh, you know, that way we got it on paper, you know, instead of just, uh, just a handshake, um. What do you think? Can I, can we go ahead and get it on the?
Nathan, you're muted.
Usually, usually there's only, if there's only a judge that requires action.
Okay, alright, let's go ahead and, uh, let's, I'll entertain a motion to approve the, uh, the January date change of our meeting. Beginning of January of, uh, twenty twenty, uh, twenty twenty-one?
Yes, sir.
Can I get a motion? This is Luke, this is Luke. Okay, alright, Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Duffield, if I may, I'll just, do I have a second? Okay, alright, we have a, a second, uh, Smith and, uh, Hadley, uh, all those in favor, acknowledge by saying aye?
Aye. Aye.
Alright, all, make the roll call here, let's make it aye.
Jackamore? Jackamore?
Yes.
Barber, yes.
Yes.
Hadley?
Yes.
Yes.
Duffield?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
LeDere?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Carries?
Okay, alright, um, now that's, uh, that brings it to the end of the October Plan Commission meeting. Anybody have anything else? Sarah, I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, and adjourn the meeting. Do you have anything else?
No, sir, thank you.
Sarah? Sarah still with it?
No, sir, I'm sorry, I was muted. I do not have anything else, thank you.
I'm the last person who's figured anybody with technical purpose, so, um, anyway, alright, we are adjourned. We'll see you guys next month.
Good night.
Bye.